Call to order. The regular commission meeting for the city of Dickinson for Tuesday, May 20th, 2025. Let the record show that all commissioners are present. First item this evening is the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, everyone, for attending this evening. Move right into the agenda. First item up is the order of business. Mr. Dossinger, are there any changes to the order of business?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. There's no change to order of business this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Any questions on the order of business, commissioners? Now I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
With a second, any further discussion on the order of business? All in favor state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item up is consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda commissioners wish to discuss? There are no items up for discussion. I would ask for a motion on the consent agenda.
Mr. President, move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll move right into administration and finance. First item this evening is proclamation, Arbor Day proclamation. City of Dickinson proclamation of Arbor Day to all to whom these presents shall come greetings. Whereas our city's trees have been a gift for to us from generations past whose foresight and concern for the future motivated them to plant shade trees for our benefit. And whereas we must use the time we have to plant new trees so that future generations will be able to reap the benefits of the shade, beauty, and environmental advantages which we so greatly enjoy. And now therefore, I, President of the City Commission of the City of Dickinson, North Dakota, do hereby proclaim June 4th, 2025 as Arbor Day in the City of Dickinson, North Dakota. I call upon the public spirited and foresighted citizens of our city to plant trees now for the present and future beauty and the enjoyment of our residents. And in witness whereof, I here unto set my hand and have caused the seal to be affixed. And I'd look for a motion to approve this proclamation.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. All in favor state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I know we have the city forester here. Does he wish, I think I saw him in the back, he wished, any comments on Arbor Day if there's anything planned?
Good evening. Thank you, President and Commissioners. Blake Johnson, city forester. This year, we will be working with a kids camp at the Public Works Building, talking about forestry, the benefits of trees, beautification, and then also planting a few trees with the students of this camp at Public Works this year.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next item up on the agenda this evening is a gaming site authorization for Dickinson State University Heritage Foundation. Mr. Dossinger?
Thank you, Mr. President and Commission. This evening, we do have a request for approval for gaming sites for Dickinson State University Heritage Foundation at three locations. First one's going to be located at Bernie's Esquire Club, 43 Sem Street. All three sites would have the effective date of July 1st of 2025 to June 30th of 2026. At the Bernie's Esquire Club location, this would be for electronic pull tab devices, pull tab dispensing device, pull tab jar, raffles, paddle wheel table, bingo prize board, sports pools, 21, and poker. The next location would be at the All In Bar and Lounge located at 48 East Broadway. This would be for pull tab jars, pull tab dispensing devices, electronic pull tab device, 21, sports pools, poker, bingo, and raffles. And the last location would be the Final Final Bar and Lounge located at 640 12th Street West. This would be for bingo, raffles, pull tab dispensing devices, electronic pull tab device, paddle wheel table, sports pool, 21, poker, and pull tab jar. City staff has reviewed the application, recommends approval for the DSCU Heritage Foundation gaming sites.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Any questions on the gaming site for All In Bar, Final Final, or Bernie's Esquire? There are no questions, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Baer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Our next item up is a citizen comment policy amendment. This is to be presented by City Administrator Dossinger.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the commission. Commissioned in your packet is a copy of Senate Bill 2180, which was signed by Governor Kelly Armstrong on April 30th. This requires local subdivision, school districts, park districts, and water resource boards to give meeting attendees the opportunity to make public comment to the boards during the meetings. The bill states public boards may only limit the comment period based on total time of comments, the time of each individual speaker to deliver their comments, or both would also limit the public comment topics to the current meeting's agenda items or the preceding meeting's agenda. Historically, the city of Dickinson has always allowed for public comment at regular city commission meetings, but adopted a citizen comment guideline and policy several months ago to find a good balance for citizens to address the commission. This evening, I am proposing an amended version to our citizen comment guideline and policy that would reflect Senate Bill 2180. In your packet, you have a red light version of our policy that indicates those changes. Just to highlight those changes, under section 1.1, the words "not on the agenda" is removed. Section 1.2 will be stricken from the policy. There will be renumbering of the sections. Under section 1.2, the verbiage "speaker must speak when directed to by the preceding officer and cannot reserve time to talk at a later time," was added. Section 1.4, the verbiage "not on the agenda" will be stricken, and the verbiage identified on the current agenda and at least one preceding agenda will be added. Under section 1.5, the words "not on the agenda" was removed. Under section 1.6 will be stricken from the policy. Underneath section 1.5, the terms "not on the agenda" are removed. Underneath section 1.6, the word "City of Dickinson may prohibit a public comment if an alternative procedure exists to bring that particular type of public comment before the public entity. The public comment includes confidential exempt information or the public comment is otherwise prohibited by law," is added. Underneath the public decorum, underneath section 2.1A1, the words "not on the agenda" is removed underneath section 1 and the sentence "because individuals not within those that may provide public comment, i.e. not a resident or a business owner within the city of Dickinson or is removed." At this time, I am asking the commission to approve these amended changes to our citizen comment guideline and policy.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Any questions, commissioners, for Mr. Dossinger or city staff?
Mr. President.
Commissioner Baer.
I'm okay with the majority of these changes that are listed here. I do have a problem, though, with 1.3, where we are going to limit it to identify it on the current agenda or at least one preceding agenda. I do have an issue with that. Prior to our recent situation, when we have had public comments, they have been mainly issues pertaining to the city. They have not pertain to stuff that we don't have control over, or they haven't been tangents. What I, I kind of, I'm thinking of situations where individuals within the city have other issues they want to discuss and that were not on the current agenda or the previous agenda. I don't like limiting people to say they can't bring up those issues. And I'll bring up a, I'll bring up a situation that I'm aware of. On the west side of town over by Menards, there is a water pipe issue with a pipe that has been frozen. And I know that the homeowners over there are having an issue. But up to this point, there's been no discussion about that situation or how it's going to be resolved. We don't discuss it. It hasn't been brought up. I think individuals like that with those types of situations should be able to bring up those issues to make the commission aware of it. And the way it's worded it this way, if it's not on the agenda or not on the preceding agenda, it cannot be brought up. So I, I'm just not, for that particular one, I am not for that. I think people should be able to talk about whatever they want. By the way, we are limiting them to five minutes with an additional five minutes. So I think as commissioners, we can stick up here for additional minutes to listen to people express their concerns. That's all I have.
Are there any other comments pertaining to the changes? Any comments on Commissioner Baer's proposal? Now that what you have proposed mirrors, what city staff is proposing mirrors the state legislation.
That is correct. That is exact verbiage in the Centric Code, which is legislative, the bill 2180, where it states that may limit a public comment only as follows except as provided in subdivision B by agenda topic to the agendas or the current or at least one preceding meeting.
Mr. President, if I could say one more thing.
Commissioner Baer.
This has not been an issue until just recently. So I'm hoping the issues we're dealing with will eventually go away and will, things will return to the state of normal and that we would be able to proceed with all city issues and not, not other stuff that we don't have control over.
Would it still be limited pertaining to city business? Is that a limitation?
Would that, you be amicable with that?
Yes.
That pertains to city business?
Yes, as long as it pertains to city business, yes. I'd be fine with that.
And I'm fine with that, too, as long as it pertains, as long as we put that verbiage in there pertaining to city business. Does not necessarily have to be limited to prior agendas, but it does have to be something that the city commission has the ability to rectify or remedy, whatever term you want to use. We can be, that's the most restrictive we can be.
I mean, it's got to be something that's within our purview. I mean, just, it can't be something totally random, obviously.
Mr. President, commissioners, if you are going to open it up to that extent, then I think the obligation and the responsibility falls on the mayor as well as the other members of the chair or the commission to determine what is within your purview and what you are going to sit here and listen to and what that's, what is going to be allowed. And the question will come up, I would put money on it, what, how to the extent are we going to determine what is actually city business and how that can be tied back in? Because that, that is a broad interpretation that opens the door to a lot of different things. And that is going to be within your discretion to make that determination. And what you may perceive to be within the scope of city business, someone else may perceive not to be within the scope of city business. So I think that there will be some ambiguity, and I think that that will cause some, probably some, issues are going to come up, I think, with that. If that's your prerogative, you certainly have the ability to do that.
I mean, I'm actually fine the way it's written. I don't really have any issues with it, other than, I understand Dr. Baer, Commissioner Baer's concerns, but there's other ways for people to come tell us if their water pipe is frozen than come to the city commission meeting. I would guess that's going to be communicated at some point to either one of us personally or staff or, I mean, I just don't see many situations where you're going to come here with some random topic of concern and have to bring it to our attention that we'd have any already heard about it. So.
I mean, just to speak to your, to your point about the pipe, have they contacted the?
Yeah, and I just brought that up as a potential situation where if they don't get resolved by speaking and talking to the people, and I do know that they have spoken with individual representatives from the city, but I just use that as example because that was on my mind from this past week as I was looking over this. I just think some, sometimes people should have the opportunity to come up in front of the commission and talk about maybe some issues they're having with, that's not moving forward with other, with the city employees or that. I just don't have a problem listening to other things that are not on the, not on today's agenda or our last proceeding meeting, what if it's several, you know, several meetings back that they want to talk about things. I just think this is, I understand what Commissioner Frederick's saying, I just think this is just too strict.
I mean, I also just look at it that if it is a random topic, we're probably not going to have the pertinent information to make a decision on it anyway, other than just to hear them out, I guess. So I'm not sure that it's going to really make a difference, other than, I mean, we're not going to make a decision because I would guess if somebody comes up here with a random topic and wants to speak that we're not going to have, be able to make an educated decision to vote one way or to resolve the problem that night until we've had a chance to research the issue, so.
Commissioner Frederick, I would likely concur with that statement. I think some other cities actually have policies in place that during public comments, commissioners or council members don't respond. They simply take that information, direct that information to other individuals within city staff. Because you're right, for the most part, you would not have the information available to make a decision, nor would that actually even be an action item for you to make a
Commissioner Riddle, any comments?
The less restriction, the better. I mean, that's, I've pretty well talked myself blue to the face at day one with this whole thing coming up here, and I'm still in the same thought processes back then, so.
I'm guessing a compromise is going to have to be in order, then, because.
Well.
Because I would guess that if it went to a vote right now, it would probably be a tie, so.
If it did, then the action would not move forward. It would basically stall for lack of a majority vote. And if this was something that the commission wanted to remain status quo, you could certainly bring it back when you have a full commission. The law in itself will not fully take effect until August 1. Shortly thereafter, you know, we'd obviously have a newly elected commission member. You could certainly do that, but if it was a 2-2 vote today, it is not going to move forward, and it would stay status quo.
And the policy we have in place now would, I mean, is, are we complying with state law, even though it doesn't go into August 1st? Are we close?
Well, Commissioner Frederick, currently, there is no restriction, there is, there are no requirements. In fact, city municipalities are not required currently to allow for public comment, only in the event that it is required statutorily. So we have a policy. I believe if you wanted to comply with that, we could keep this in place. And then if you wanted to bring it back after August 1, you certainly could if you felt that the outcome might be different.
I mean, there's whole counties and cities that don't allow any comments. And there's, West Fargo, for example, they allow two minutes. Am I correct? Two minutes. You know, and they don't allow the commissioners to respond. So, I mean, there's extremes everywhere, and so I, to me, it's, I'm, I'm fine with leaving it up to our discretion that when somebody signs up, we can look at it and say, okay, this does not pertain. We're not going to hear this. But I guess I'm torn on.
I mean, I can compromise if we think that we're able to determine what we're going to listen, I mean, what city business is and what city business is not. I guess it'll be left up to you, Mr. Mayor, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. I mean, if we leave it up to city business.
And I guess if it gets carried away, we can always.
Right.
Look at it again, this policy, so.
We're allowed to be as restrictive as what the state allows, so.
Correct. Again, I just want to reiterate that the concern would be the ambiguity in determining what is related to city business and what isn't. And again, the, the problem being is what may be for one may not be for another, and that's where I'm concerned about the potential possibility of legality for the city in that respect, so.
I think we're dealing with that right now. What a city business.
I would agree, Mr. President.
So.
Well, I look at it, you know, we would maintain the five minutes, five with the additional 10, but, and I think you can make the decision as to do we listen to it or don't we listen to it. I, I mean, I agree with Commissioner Frederick, I'm pretty sure where, I know where the vote would be, and maybe we, we keep what we have right now until we get the fifth commissioner here.
And I'm fine with that also. We wait until we get a new commissioner, keep the policy that we have in place, so.
Make the motion?
Yeah. I would look for a motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we keep the current policy in place until we get the new commissioner on board.
Okay. We have a motion to keep current policy in place. Like Commissioner Baer?
Would we just table this, or?
I think at this point, we would just make the motion because the tabling is going to take too long, it's going to put us way past the agendas, so.
We table it, we have to bring it back next meeting, so.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay. So, we have a motion by Dr. Baer, second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll move into the special election update. Mr. Dossinger?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the commission. At the last city commission meeting, I brought you an update on the special election. Was previously stated that the candidate petitions will be due by 4:00 PM Mountain Time in City Hall on June 15th of 2025. Under North Dakota Centric Code 1-03-05, when an act is required by law to be performed on a holiday or Saturday, the act may be performed upon the next business day with the same effect as it had been performed upon the day appointed. Please note that under North Dakota Centric Code 1-301, Sunday is considered a holiday in the state of North Dakota. June 16th is a Monday, and ballots will be due by 4:00 PM Mountain Time, Mountain Time on, in City Hall on Monday at 4:00 PM, June 16th. And the update has already been made on our city website.
Any questions on the updated special election schedule? We'll proceed. Mr. Dossinger, you have an introduction to make?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the commission. This evening, evening, I'm very proud to introduce our new marketing and events director, Carter Fong. You may know him as the chamber director. He is in the audience tonight. I'd like to ask him to step forward and introduce himself and say a few words to the commission and the community.
Good afternoon, everyone. I hope it's okay that what I have planned to say fits on one screen capture on my phone and that I can get to chamber business after hours, which is ongoing, if they'll still have me, right? City Commissioners, Mayor Decker, Dr. Baer, and the hiring committee, thank you for your trust and thank you for this opportunity. I am eager to get started on Monday, June 2nd. As I transition out at the chamber, I want our members to know how much I have truly enjoyed my four-plus years there. I haven't had one bad day in that office. I will remain involved part-time, and I have a tremendous amount of faith in the young team that we have been building there. I view this as a win-win. Dickinson residents, I am so grateful for this opportunity. I want you to know, I know that you want transparency and fiscal responsibility. I've been handed the 2025 Legacy Square schedule in this very well-organized binder, and I will carry it out to the best of my abilities with my eyes and my ears and my mind open to how we can best utilize that space in 2026 and beyond. I also plan to deliver value on that bullet point in my contract that reads other duties as assigned, such as, I've already used the, utilized the city's podcast studio, stay tuned, and I look forward to working with the Dickinson Youth Commission and the Summer of 2026 Theater Roosevelt Presidential Library Committee. Together as a community, I think it's our time to shine, and that's all I have today.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome, Carter.
Thank you, Carter.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody.
I'm sure we're going to get you right to work, so. Our next item this evening is item F, mid-year salary increase. City Administrator Dossinger?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the commission. At the commission work session that was held on May 6th, a mid-year COLA increase was presented. The, the COLA increase would go into effect on the July 11th payroll. The salary increase would target retention and recruitment, specifically in our police department and public works department, where we are having our biggest staffing difficulties. The exempt staff general scale would see a 1% increase. The fire scale would see a 1% increase. The firefighters and the part-time scale would see a 2% COLA increase. That adjustment is because they did not see a step increase in 2025. The police scale with exempt staff would see a 2% increase. The public work scale with exempt staff would see a 2% COLA increase, and the general hourly scale without public works would receive a 1% COLA increase. With the number of open positions, vacancies in the police department and public works this year is almost a budget neutral for, for 2025. I am, I am recommending consideration of approval of the mid-year COLA increase at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Any questions for Mr. Dossinger on the mid-year increase? Ms. Wanko, do we need to have this as a resolution or just a general motion to approve?
It would just be a motion.
Mr. President, it's just a motion to approve.
Okay. There's no discussion, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Baer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further discussion? Any questions for staff? Hearing none, we'll vote. Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Dossinger, you have a presentation on the motor vehicle department?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the commission. As we also discussed in the commission work session that was held on May 6th, a couple of months ago, we were contacted and notified that the motor vehicle department in Dickinson was potentially closing. Prior to that, the state had reached out to the Chamber of Commerce and Stark County to see if there was any interest in managing the motor vehicle department due to the current contractor retiring. They were not interested.
Hard time hearing you in the back, so.
The motor vehicle department is currently located in the T-Rex Mall. You have the driver's license division, which is a straight round division, which all employees are state employees. You then have the motor vehicle department, which is ran by a private contractor and employees are not state employees. Why I'm talking about tonight is the absorption of the motor vehicle department becoming a city department, not the driver's license division. These are two separate departments. The motor vehicle department provides an essential service to our community members and our region. A draft budget was proposed for the remainder of the 2025 and for the 2026 with revenue and expenses projections. The forecasted budget was modeled after three years of annual financial profit and loss reports from 2022 through 2024. The revenue source comes from service fees, $10 for title work, $2 for registration fees, and $2 for administrative fees. The draft budget does not include revenue from the kiosk or ATM fees. I am projecting a total of five staff members needed to run the facility, four staff members are at a grade 12 position, and one staff member at a grade 15 position. This time, I'm looking for a motion or direction from the commission on what direction you'd like to go with the motor vehicle department.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Any questions for Mr. Dossinger on this? Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Any questions for Mr. Dossinger on this recommendation?
Is this motion just to start contract negotiations with taking it over or to approve the department?
This motion would be for us to begin the process of approval of job descriptions, hiring staff, and taking it over, and finalize the MOU with the state of North Dakota, and have any other free discussions with the current contractor that needs to be done. So a motion to approve would be for us to begin the process of taking over this department. We estimate in the remainder of the 2025 budget that we'd be about $48,000 of revenue over expenses, and then in the 2026 budget, we'd be about, estimated about $118,000 revenue over expenses in the 2026 budget.
And I know the, what status the chamber's in, but the county had no interest, my understanding.
That is correct. I think this is a service that's vital to our community. If you have anything, any major title work other than being able to utilize a kiosk station, you'd have to take your title work to Bismarck or Buell.
Well, if there's no more questions, I guess I'd look for a motion.
I'd make that motion that we begin the process of taking this over. Can we also, the only other thing, could make sure that this budget is, gets out to us? We didn't get that in our package, so.
Certainly.
Second.
We have a motion to begin the negotiations for the transfer of DMV to the city of Dickinson by Commissioner Frederick.
Mr. Riddle, second.
Oh, I didn't hear you. All right. Commissioner Riddle, second. Any further discussion? Hearing non will vote, Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
It is 5 o'clock, so tonight we have some public hearings. And the very first one is we have our annual elder care presentation. And this will be presented by Executive Director Rodakowski.
Good evening, Mayor Decker, Commissioners, City Administrator Dossinger, all the city employees and the community of Dickinson. My name's Colleen Rodakowski, I'm the Executive Director over at Elder Care in Dickinson Public Transit. And we are giving our yearly update. Once a year per our contract with the city, we give update on how Dickinson Public Transit is doing, and I also like to throw in elder care because we operate both those services. First of all, before I even start, a big thank you to the partnership we have with the city of Dickinson. We cannot provide the services that we do without having the support of the city. The city, we're housed in one of your buildings, the public transit building up north. And we get funding from you as well to help from the city sales tax and from some of the public transit, and covering the utilities of the building. We have two services. Dickinson Public Transit operates the public transit in the town. And then our second service is under elder care is we provide senior meals for people aged 60 and over. We provide hot meals and also frozen meals in subcontract with restaurants to provide a nutritional meal. I'd like to introduce two people who are with me today, our operations manager, Rose Drake, if you could stand, Rose. And new to our team is Denise Humbert, if you could stand, she's our Human Resource Program Coordinator, and she's been with us for two months? Two months. Our mission is that we work to meet the transit needs of the community and the surrounding area. We provide transit services to the general public, we help improve quality of life, freedom of mobility, and we allow them the opportunity for employment and self-sufficiency, which may otherwise be impossible. We have six areas of success I want to touch on. The first one is increased ridership. We've been doing well with public transit. We're fully staffed with a fabulous team. Last year, we bought four new buses. That was about $550,000 for the four that we added to our fleet. This year, we'll have two vans that we received in procurement. We implemented a brand-new software for the city, it's Equalane Transit Software, and that's being used for routing rides. And also, the next mobility under Equalane, that next box, that Aqua Box is brand-new. People now can download an app with the Equalane software, and they can schedule a ride, cancel a ride. But most importantly, they can see where their drivers at. It's kind of similar to Uber, if you've used Uber in another city. And then, of course, the other success is marketing using our social media. We're a viable connection to the community. This is the order of the largest rides that we do for Dickinson is work-related, then medical, shopping, social recreation, and then education. We are open Monday through Saturday, 6:00 in the morning to 6:00 PM. We're open every day of the year. We close early at 3:00 on some of the major holidays. On Sunday, we're open at 9:00 in the morning till 6:00. A one-way trip in town is $4 one-way. If you're going to Bismarck on a pre-scheduled day, it's $75 round trip. We do take people on off-days to Bismarck, and that's pending if we have a driver vehicle available. Brand-new that our operations manager, Rose Drake, just implemented is we're going to Bismarck two days a week now. Tuesdays and Thursdays, we have a run going to Bismarck. And this already gave you a little information about that mobility by Equalane. This is the app that riders can pay by cash, credit, debit card, and check. Brand-new is going to be that they can add money to a digital balance so that when they get on the vehicle, it'll take the ride costs of $4 right off the balance that they're carrying with us. This has been fabulous. A lot of people are using it. We actually are pushing all of our riders to use that. They can still do cash and check, but we really, if people used to have a punch ticket, and we eliminated that, and the driver then can do the ride quicker, faster, we can get more rides in for the day. And they can download it at the Apple Store or Google Play Store. I added this chart this year to show you the last eight years of trips, passenger trips. When you look at '17, '18, and '19, do you see how the bell curve is going up? Then we hit 20 years of 2020, '21, '22 were the COVID years where we had ridership drop. Then the last two years, you see that that curve is continuing going up. So we have been growing with public transit, our rides. One-way trips, right here, you can tell the work, work is almost, it's at 46.5% is work. That's crazy. Years and years ago was always medical was number one. But it's been doing, it's been like this probably for eight or 10 years, that we've been pushing and taking people to work more than medical. Medical and shopping are almost identical, about a little over 17% each, so. And that, that's, it's a nice little pie chart to show you the types of trips we're taking. These are the four top trips, and you can see the growth of work right there from 13,000 in 2021 up to 21,600, 21,000 in '24, medical, shopping, and then the public buildings. Critical needs that we have is always funding. You know, with costs of everything being so high, I'm increased funding, always continuing partnerships and developing new partnerships. The partnerships are strong partnerships to the city of Dickinson and the community. We got ND DOT, we get grant fundings and dollars from them for operating. And Senior County Mill Levy across all eight counties, we receive for elder care meals. Always continue to retain our staff and adapt to new market needs. This is the agency income for last year, that, again, we have the burgundy pie chart. The biggest is 55%, which is agency income. That's the contracts we're getting from DOT, as well as the Department of Human and Health Services for the meal program. Local match is where you're going to see your city funding. The dollars that we receive from the city go into the local match. In addition to contracts, Medicaid, we do offer Medicaid rides. The fair income's about $164,000, the meal site income, and interest and total income. I'd want to make a comment, I'm pretty, we have started to do a little bit more with some CDs to help cash flow, and to also, CDs to help us get a little bit more income from the savings or the checking, and that has helped us a little bit. I know we're no comparison to yours. I've gotten up on here after the city's budget. I'm pretty little, or we are at public transit and elder care. Here's our expenses, 2.3 million in expenses. Net income was about $33,000 last year. I like to see something there because it has not always been that way. The meal program has been struggling in the past few years, except during the COVID time when we got a lot of relief dollars, but it's nice to see that we have an income and we're not in the red. Dickinson Public Transit building expansion, I've talked to the commissioners a little bit when I've come up here. I decided to work really hard to see if we can get a building addition onto the public transit building. Double size, about 9,000 square feet, bigger garage, more office space. And I'm pleased to say I've been writing grants with DOT, and I did get one last year. So right now, we're in the process of the $200,000 grant on the design, conceptual design. And the city has given, is giving the 50,000 match for that building. And I see Chris is here, I was looking for you, Chris, you were in the back last time. Chris Keller, very helpful helping us, senior engineer, he's helping us put together the procurement, helping me work with the building. You know, that's not a strength that I have, except for the original building that was built for public transit in 2012. But this is so exciting because we have meetings held in our garage. I think Commissioner Joe Riddle and Jason Frederick, you guys were here for that first phase in our garage where we did interviews. So we're going to look at getting a nice board room, meeting room for the employees and stuff. So I'm excited that you guys were part of that first procurement. Thank you for your time. And so right now, we're in that first phase. I'm going to do a next slide and show you where we're at with that first phase. Second phase of the procurement will be the secure ND DOT funding. I did put in a request for some funding for this building last December, and I have not heard anything yet. But once, if that funding comes through, do know then we'll go to design blueprints and bid, and then I will come back to you and always keep you guys informed of this whole phase of procurement. And also ask for that match for the building as well. Third phase will be construction of the addition. So I don't know if I missed anything here, but I'm going to, I'm going to go to the next slide. I was going to ask you, Chris, if there's anything you wanted to add. Okay. All right. Here's where we're at with the conceptual design. Right now, we're looking at existing conditions. That's the building right there of Dickinson Public Transit. And then we're doing a lot of listening sessions right now. Ubel Design has received this award. We'll be looking at alternatives to this conceptual design, the preferred concept, budget, building time, and then the final report. And again, know that we will be presenting this to the elder care management board and to you guys as well when we have something to show you. Very excited about this. Challenges that we face, yeah, increased costs of operations. I know you guys are all familiar with that. And then, of course, funding, hiring and retaining qualified staff is something we always work hard to have. And then the building, that expansion on that procurement is something else that we're working on. The goals, broken the goals down. Number one is our mission is safety and customer service, not meeting customer service needs, but exceeding them. And those are, those are the two that we talk about all the time, safety of the vehicles, our riders, our meal people, our staff, and then customer service. Financial security with operations, I did note to you earlier on, this year, it is a goal this year that already has been retained. We've opened up a run on Thursdays to Bismarck. I put in Theater Roosevelt Presidential Library, Carter Fong bought that up as well. And it's something on our radar, you know, that's coming, coming 4th of July of '26. I've been at some meetings across the state in Dickinson. I'm just not sure if they're going to need any type of transit services there. I just know that I, as a director and the staff, you know, we're open to hearing what the needs are, and if there's something that we are able to maybe provide any services in the town of Madorah or trips from Dickinson. I just threw that in there for operations. Software is engaging our customers with the Equalane, updating social media, working with staff again, and then working with state and local officials on that expansion building. I threw in a slide that shows you our fleet and the mileage and their ages. Again, four new buses last year, and we just received a contract for two vans that we applied for for this year. I'd like to throw in a little bit about elder care. We had over 80,000 meals last year across southwest North Dakota. We have a great staff. Do know we've had to fundraise the last couple of years. Fundraising is just needed. It's challenging because the money that we get through the Department of Health and Human Services, it's only so much. It's like a can of pop. Once you take a sip every month and draw that down with the money that's coming down, when it's empty, there's nothing there, but I have to keep doing meals. So we did take a big loss last year, I want to say it was about $120,000. This year, I anticipate about $16,000. We did have to pull back two. We usually give two frozen meals for people over the weekend that would request those meals. We did have to pull that back to one. And we also partner with Mom's Meals, and we were giving seven days a week, we dropped that to six. We've had to reduce, first time in my whole career, 17 years, I've reduced meals. But we just have to watch that because we always have to make sure that we're strong and that we can continue operating and don't put ourselves at risk. We were down about 1,700 meals last year, and we provided over 81,000 meals in '24. Next, I have just a real brief clipping from Monica Han that I'm going to run this through with you.
Difficult to travel when the weather is harsh and road conditions are poor, even if it is just for a quick grocery run. It can be even harder if you're older and more prone to serious injury. Elizabeth Shores tells us how elder care in Dickinson is making days like today less risky for the elderly.
Andrew Burgos starts each weekday morning the same way. He picks up the day's supply of meals, loads them up, and heads out on his regular route, even if the weather is less than ideal. He says his mother, who worked in healthcare, made him value work like this.
It's been part of my life, I think, from an early age, so I just feel that if people need something, you know, you should be there to help them.
On any given day, he'll see at least 37 of those people during one of his delivery trips. Aside from needing to drive extra carefully when the streets are frozen over, Burgos says he also makes it a point to check in on each of those 37 people. John Urban is someone Burgos checks on regularly. He says Burgos's help has been invaluable.
Hey, Zeus.
The food is good. It's, actually, for me, it provides me with a nutritious meal.
A meal that he doesn't have to take unnecessary risks to get.
This thing eliminates one of those hassles on a day like today. This has been a real great service to us.
Burgos says it's fulfilling work, and he values the connections he's made during his stops.
They're just really great people, so I'm just happy to do it for them.
He says on Friday, they leave extra frozen meals to help get recipients through the weekend. In Dickinson, I'm Elizabeth Shores, reporting for you on News Leader.
Nice little clipping on elder care. And do know, community people as well, we're always looking for people to help deliver meals. It's hard sometimes to hire somebody for a couple hours a day. We do take volunteers, and we also take employees to help us with that. A nice clipping from KFYR. Challenges, again, increased seniors in eating these meals. Sometimes running out of that with state reimbursements, I already told you about. Raw food costs, inflation, marketable, maintaining staff, participants can't afford to give a donation. We do ask for $5 if someone's able to, to help with the cost of the food, but it's donation-based through the Older Americans Act, and people are struggling. So it's hard for them to make a type of donation. Something I noticed that's not on here that we are experiencing recently is we've had to close our meal site in Dunn Center, and then the one that we had in Kildare, you know, we couldn't find a meal deliverer, so hard. You know, it's, sometimes we will drive meals from Dickinson in. Sometimes, you know, we just have to make those tough decisions, but we're struggling. We're struggling with meal delivers and, of course, cooks. We have two cooks left. We have mostly cooks at all of our sites. But we have two left because of the challenges of hiring. So we do supplement meals with Mom's Meals. It's a refrigerator meal out of Iowa that we will have shipped in two weeks at a time for people. Not as good as when you have a home-cooked meal, but we are really servicing a lot of people. people at Mom's Meals. Again, our goal for elder care is financial security. Maybe we can open up some Cafe 60 sites. We have some restaurants we work with. They have to follow the nutritional menus. Sometimes that can be hard for them, but we're always looking at partnering. In conclusion, just a big thank you. Again, so grateful for that partnership and our relationship with the City of Dickinson, the community, DOT, Dalton Aging Services, the management board, our team, community. Big thanks. We're happy to be providing these much-needed services in the community. So I'll entertain any questions next.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Rotikowski. Any questions? You're doing a wonderful job, as always.
Thank you.
So thank you so much for all you do.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Okay, we'll move into the public hearing for the rezoning request of the Wall and Cook rezoning. This will be presented by City Planner Burcek.
Thank you, Commissioners. Natalie Burcek, City Planner. So the applicant is requesting approval of a zoning map amendment from low-density residential or R1 to medium-density residential or R2 for lots 2, 3, and 4 of Block 14 of the Cooks Meadows Hills Fourth Edition subdivision located within the City of Dickinson. So the purpose of this rezoning is to allow the applicant to develop the properties with single-family attached. The applicant has submitted an associated irregular plat that will be considered if this proposed zoning map amendment is approved. Additionally, there is another application to rezone that lot that you see to the west that is remaining R1 with this rezoning, to rezone that into R2 as well, so that it's not just an R1 island. The applicant is here to answer any questions that you guys might have, and staff recommends approval of this rezone.
Thank you, Ms. Burcek. Any questions for city staff? Okay, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone with any concerns about the rezoning request of the Wall and Cook lots, please come forward, state your name, and let us know your concerns. Any concerns with the rezoning request? Seeing no one from the public has any concerns with the rezone request, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, are there any further questions for city staff or the applicant? Not, then I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick of the rezone request.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Baer. Any further discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
And you have a corridor overlay district boundaries, Ms. Burcek.
Thank you, Commissioners. Natalie Burcek, City Planner. So we are requesting approval of a zoning text amendment to Division 5 Corridor Overlay District as found in Chapter 62, the zoning of the Dickinson Municipal Code to include Fairway Street in Section 62-318, boundaries of the corridor overlay district. This addition will require future commercial and public site developments along Fairway Street to abide by the development standards and regulations of the corridor overlay district. Staff has not received any public comments about this request. We're here to answer any questions, and staff recommends approval of this text amendment.
Thank you, Ms. Burcek. Are there any questions for the city planner before we go to the public hearing? This would be Ordinance 1818. There are no questions, I'll open up the public hearing. If anybody wishes to come forward, please state your name and your concerns about designating the corridor overlay district boundaries. Anyone with any concerns? Any concerns with the corridor overlay district boundaries? Seeing no one wishes to come forward with any concerns on Ordinance 1818, which is the corridor overlay district boundaries, if there are no more questions for city staff by Commissioners, I would look for a motion.
Ms. President, I'd move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Baer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Is there any other comments or questions? Not, we'll vote on 1818. Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
We'll move back into the agenda. Next item up is Item H, our monthly financial report. Deputy City Administrator Carlson.
Thank you, President Deckard, Commissioners. And this is our monthly financial report. So with that, huh, we're not going to have one. No, I'm just kidding. So our statement of fund activity, this is showing where our balance is, is for the fund balance of our general fund. And as you can see, last month it was 4 million, and this, and this month it is 12, and that is due to the transfer-ins. We do a quarterly transfers from our other funding sources that's approved on the budget. And so that's why that one is up by 8 million. So getting into our sales tax monthly breakdown. 2025 came in at 520,186, which is about 193,000 or 59% more than 2024 for the month of April. We had that real deep dive in 2024. And our half percent sales tax, we do separate that just to keep it together. April's came in at about 260,000, and that's about 96,000 more than 2024. And then combining the two for just the sales tax comparison over four months, our 2025 is coming in at 16.9% more than 2024, and it's only about 2.17% higher than 2023. Hospitality tax for the month of April came in at 5,898 more than 2024, or 8.16%. And then overall, the four months, 2025 total revenue is about 13,000, a little over 13,000, or 3.74% higher than 2024. Our occupancy for April came in 2,368 short of 2024 for the month of April. And the occupancy tax and the four-month total of '25 is about 1,372 higher than 2024, but just short of the 2019 total, which was the total amount in four months, it's been the highest. Our oil impact revenue or gas tax, 2025 is still trending, but 20, between 2023 and '24. April came in 64,665 lower than 2024, and just 8,000 higher than 2023. And over the four months, total comparison shows that 2025 coming in at 320,000 lower than 2024, or by about 16%. Our general fund revenue, the benchmark should be about 33% for the month of April, and we've collected 56%, and that is due to also the transfers that we do on a quarterly basis, so that is considered into the revenue. But then our general fund expenses, the expended amount is 30%, so we're right on track with that. Our utility revenue, 35% has been collected, and then 27% expended on that. I will stand for any questions that you may have on the April monthly report.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson. Are there any questions for Mrs. Carlson on the monthly financial report? I know one thing that's been brought to my attention, we, we used to get a breakdown on the accounts receivable and accounts payable. I know we, we get a lot in, sent out to us. Are we able to, like the 91 and over? We don't have the exact breakdown. I think at one time you were providing the city commission with those, like a detailed breakdown of who's outstanding.
You're, you're wanting the 91 breakdown. Is that what you're asking for?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. That I can do.
Okay.
And then, we didn't get the PowerPoint slides on this one either.
Yeah, we didn't get those at all.
We usually don't do the PowerPoint slides on the...
We've had all these graphs on our packets every month.
Yep.
Oh.
Yep.
Okay.
We've had them before, so.
So we prefer, I'd prefer to get those again.
Yeah. We could send them. Oh, okay.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. Well, thank you for the report.
Yes.
Now we'll have our HR monthly report.
Thank you, President Deckard and Commissioners. So this report is as of May 14th, so a few things have changed since then, but we'll start off with the Police Department. First off, we have, for police officer, three openings, and we are in the interview stage for those positions. Telecommunicator, one, we have two openings, one in background, we did make a hire, Jennifer Michael. Animal Control Officer, we've got one opening, and we did fill that with Chantel Leggett. Corporal Police Officer, we had an internal opening. Andy Stidham was recently promoted to that position, position. Fire Department, firefighter, paramedics, we had four left to fill, one in background. We have made some of the, well, there's three of them there, Dylan, Justin, and Anthony were recently hired, so we still have one in background. And then I think we'll be filled. Part-time firefighter, we've got three openings, we did hire James Henry, and then we've got some in the background in the interview stage. Public Works, a lot of these are seasonals. We do have some operator, street maintenance operator, had four openings, we did make some hires there, some in the interview stage. So we are moving forward on the street. Solid waste operator, we had two openings, did make a hire there, and one more on the interview stage. Buildings and grounds operator, one opening, did not make a hire, so we reopened that position. And then the seasonal buildings and grounds, we had 12 openings, four of them were rehired, and then eight new hires. Seasonal forestry, the laborer, we had three openings, two of them came back again this year, and then we had one new hire. And the seasonal utility operator had four openings, two of them came back again, and two new hires. And then the seasonal solid waste, two openings, we hired Lee Morel, and then we have one more that we're doing interviews for. Community development and engineering, buildings and codes, we had an administrative assistant opening. We did hire Kylie Zastopol, she's been working with us already. Project engineer, we did reopen that position again, and we're going to work on trying to get that filled. Museum, we had a seasonal paleontology assistant opening, Garrett Rogers was hired for that position. And then seasonal museum worker, we had one open, Matthew Pretzer came back again to work for us. Finance, the deputy finance director position is open again, we'll have that open until May 30th, so working really hard on getting that one filled. Finance tech, we had one opening, we did make an internal transfer there. Valerie Lindley from our court office came over to finance. Marketing and events for Legacy Square, as you know, Carter Fong took that position. We're excited to have him onboard. Seasonal programming assistant, we did fill that with Xander Beeson. Since this was created, we also did hire Macy Back for very limited hours to help us out with the events. And then seasonal Legacy Square Maintenance Worker, we did make, hire an offer there, and we're in the background stage. Librarian, we had one position open for librarian, and Robb Eberhart came back again. He moved out of, out of state and decided to come back to Dickinson, so we're happy to have him back. And then, of course, the deputy clerk of court opened up when Valerie went over to finance, so they were busy all day doing lots of interviews for that position. Hopefully, we'll get a good hire there. And I'll take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mrs. Dominick. Any questions for Mrs. Dominick on the HR report? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move into Public Works. We have the Public Works Quarterly Report. This will be presented by Deputy Public Works Director Waldo.
All right. Good evening, Mr. President and Commissioners. I'm Jake Waldo, I'm your Deputy Public Works Director, and I'm here to give the Quarter One Report for Public Works. First quarter overall was an interesting one. It kind of threw us for a loop. It looked like it was going to be really nice in January, and then February, we had that bitter cold snap with no snow cover and that, you know, the water breaks start, and it just started moving and didn't quit there. That cold weather did also lead to quite a few potholes here in the beginning of the spring, but overall, we were able to take advantage of that nice weather in the first in January there, get some good training done for some of our new staff and all that, so we are grateful for that. Asset Essentials Work Orders, we are lower in the first quarter of '25 than in years prior. A lot of that has to do with, like I said, that more mild weather in January, less, less calls for cans being broken on the solid waste side, and then also our water meter and register upgrades. We're kind of starting to hammer out that list and work our way through it, so that number will continue to go down because of that volume. Buildings and grounds, they did have 100 maintenance responses. Almost half of those were in the month of March, and then January and, January and February were pretty evenly split. There was some snow clearance opportunities for parking lots and sidewalks, and then our annual fire extinguisher testing was completed as well in the first quarter. For fleet, excuse me, for fleet, we have solid waste PD leading the, leading the pack there for a number of work orders. That is pretty standard fare for them. On the forestry side, we have a pilot project that's going to be underway here real soon for this FlexiPave. That is for the tree cutouts and concrete as an alternative to the metal or the poly tree grates. It has a lot of great benefits, it seems. We were able to get the pilot at a pretty reasonable cost, so we'll be excited to see how that turns out. For the solid waste side, we have a comparison of our total tonnages versus our recycling tonnages. It is important to note with this data that that total tonnage does include commercial, out-of-town, all of those accounts, whereas the only kind of recycling that we offer is for residential in-town customers. Comparison for tonnages going to the landfill, the higher tonnages here in 2025 all the way through Quarter One is likely a reflection of that warmer weather. Scale visits, we see the same thing. January, we were a little lower, but there in February and March, we are higher than we were in years prior. That is likely due to that nice weather as well. For streets, we had no snow to speak of, so there wasn't a whole lot of snow removal going on. We do have a comparison there of the amount of brine used versus the amount of salt used. That really is a good reflection of kind of what our weather looked like for a lot of the first quarter. They can use the brine and it does a really good job, right down to about that 10 degrees Fahrenheit mark. Below that, they have to use that dry salt. Southwest Water Authority, we have our total consumption for the city. We are pretty well right in line with years past. February, there was a pretty big spike there, we were a little high. I believe that's probably a reflection of the number of water breaks that we had, but that's speculation on my part. Our utility billing work orders are high as well. That again covers everything from those register replacements, meter upgrades, and then, uh, delinquent accounts as well. For the wastewater group there, uh, we have a breakdown of their total calls. Not a whole lot to residences, mostly pump repairs and lift station repairs. That cold weather is really hard on those, especially those smaller buildings. Some of them don't have, you know, don't have adequate heating or, uh, not very well insulated. For our water reclamation facility, we kind of have a breakdown of where, where our water went during the, uh, during the first quarter there. For February, you can see almost all of our water went into storage, into cell four. And then going into March, we had no water at all go into stores. We were able to put everything, uh, as normal effluent into the Hart River. That reuse sold, those numbers are purely to our industrial partners. South Hart was not taking any water during quarter one. We do have a lot of new faces that joined the team during the first quarter. Uh, we're pretty excited to see recruiting starting to do well. But it does equal out to spending a lot of time training. But those folks show a lot of potential, we're happy to have them onboard. With that, I'm happy to entertain any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Waldo. Any questions? Thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Next up, we have our Public Safety Police Department quarterly report. That'll be presented by Police Chief Siani.
Good evening, President Decker and Commissioners. This evening, we'll be presenting the first quarter report for 2025. Sorry for the delay in getting here. Seems like the commission agenda has just been jam-packed here, and my report seems to get pushed further and further, but I know you guys look forward to this, so here we go. Starting out with dispatch activity, um, over the past three months, in 2025, dispatch has received an average of 664 emergency calls for service. Of that, emergency calls, we go into the non-emergency calls. 3,664 average monthly calls were non-emergency related. And then the dispatch outgoing calls for service, we're averaging right around 859 calls going out each month. Calls for service for this period, um, we responded to an average of 2,269 calls for service each month. These numbers are higher in the first, first quarter than the previous, uh, two years' first quarter for a comparison. Overall traffic safety, the average, we averaged about 508 traffic stops, uh, each month, resulting in an average of 234 citations, 276 warnings were issued as part of our traffic safety. Accidents, we averaged 76 traffic accidents investigated over the past, uh, three months average. Um, we hit right around two injury accidents in those, so accident numbers were down. And I think that's conducive of some of the lack of snow we had and some of the better road conditions that we were faced with. Overall arrests, um, we were averaging about 157 arrests were made, with the majority of these arrests were contributable to some type of alcohol or violence. Um, it seems like, uh, we're trending higher on a lot of DUI arrests. We're trending higher on some simple assault, domestic violence issues, and theft is still is a, a, a factor in a lot of the arrests we're making. Some of the classifications of the arrests that we are making, um, averaged seven felonies a month, 93 misdemeanors, and seven infractions. That's, uh, an average for the last three months. Criminal investigations are fairly busy. Detective averaged, detectives averaged approximately 50 new cases each month. They have been typically carrying about a 27 case caseload. 13 of their cases have been forwarded out to the state's attorney, city attorney, or another agency for review for consideration of long-form complaints. Um, and it should be noted that CID, or the Criminal Investigations Division, has been running short of detective for, for many years. I'm reminded of that regularly, and just when we get close to transferring someone in, it seems like we lose someone else and we have to put that on a hiatus. And, and I do truly hear about that. They're looking forward to getting that, at least that department filled. Callouts, here's an overview of some of the cases that just the investigations have, uh, have worked. As you can see from the, the graph here, there's a number of burglaries, thefts, um, a number of motor vehicle thefts included in there. Should be noted detectives are called out an average of six times each month during the past three months, which is, uh, at least once a week for them. So they're guaranteed a call out at least once, if not twice a week from, um, and that's kind of a low average from this time of the year, from where we're at. Some of their, uh, top, uh, numbers generated, generators for CID was, um, they, they, they worked, uh, 34 search warrants in which they applied for search warrants. The, um, 24 speak with an officers and 22, um, agency assists were the higher numbers that they handled. Going into the behavioral health, uh, which was down a little bit this quarter from what we've seen previously, which is a good thing for us, um, we responded to an average of 91 behavioral health-related calls. Majority of these, those were associated with welfare checks. Going into training, um, past three months, staff posted, uh, 512 hours of post-approved training. This equates to about 171 hours of training each month. Some of the training highlights were, um, intoxicilizer, um, leadership training, firearm instructor, K-9 Academy, incident command, um, to name a few. Records was fairly busy as well. A fingerprinted 98 over the past three months, and that's 33 average a month. That fingerprinted 14 average sex offenders came in and were, were processed. And right around 37 search warrants were processed each month during that period. Going in, uh, animal control, um, the animal shelter averaged about 88 calls for service each month. Most of these calls were related to running at large, as, as is typical. They averaged about 52 animals impounded each month, with the majority of those being dogs this time. Previously, we, we usually run into a lot of cats. Only 10 remained at the pound, and, uh, the rest were either returned to their owner, rescued, or adopted out. Pound supervision has been wonderful with that. We very rarely euthanize any animals. They all get adopted out or fostered, so she's doing a great job with that. Um, of the 157 animals impounded, 104 were strays. Five came through Stark County Sheriff's Department. Three were associated with a physical arrest of the owner or a court order. There were 44 surrendered animals, and one was impounded as a result of a bite. Moving into school resource, um, DSU generated 12 investigative reports. There were no summonses or arrests, aside from the reports. Dickinson High School, 56 investigative reports and four juvenile summonses. Two adult summonses were also issued at the high school level. Dickinson Middle School, 57 investiga, investigative reports were generated with 14 juvenile summonses issued. And the elementary level, um, had generated 50 IRs, so. Um, community events, we, uh, a number of PR activities, uh, department took part in. DSU, we had a drug presentation there that participated in. Dickinson High School's winter formal dance, the law enforcement, we, we have two classes we teach at the CTE Center for law enforcement classes. They did that, they had a health and wellness fair that we participated in, and they do a lot of, as you can see, a lot of courtroom security and, uh, commission security due to their availability. Um, we have a congratulations going out to Jenny Begata. Jenny is a senior public safety telecommunications. She did apply for a, and was awarded a $2,500, um, North Dakota APCO scholarship. As a result of that scholarship, she will be attending the National APCO Conference in Baltimore, Maryland later this year. A big thank you goes out to the North Dakota APCO for making this possible, and a congratulation to Jenny. She wrote up a nicer, um, application that got her that scholarship. In January, we had our 2024 Christmas Party Awards banquet per se. Many staff were recognized for their achievements in 2024, from life-saving awards to meritorious service awards. If I listed them all, we would be here quite a while. To highlight just a few, the, uh, Chief's Award of Excellence recognizes DPD employee who embodies the core values and spirit of the department through self-sacrifice, dedication, service, and genuine care for others. As I mentioned with the shelter, it's been well-run, well-oiled machine, to say the most, to say the least, and that's attributable to Amanda and her work down there. So Amanda Paulson has gone above and beyond with her work at the pound and earned the Chief's Award of Excellence for 2024. Congratulate Amanda. The other one I wanted to bring a little attention to was the Traffic Safety of the Officer Year Award. And that went out to Anthony Mauser for the 2024 Traffic Safety Officer of the Year Award. This award is measured, measured by the generated, um, part, numbers generated in traffic enforcement, grant participation, overall proactive traffic safety activities. Anthony was, uh, well above all, many of his peers in, in that category, well-earned. Upcoming events are no longer upcoming events, but we'll touch on them anyway, got delayed on this, so. We did have the, uh, the Heroes Ball in April, a well-tended event, uh, everybody had fun. Daddy-daughter dance, or which was three days, Wednesday, uh, Thursday through Saturday in the first week of May. That is always a sold-out event, uh, great participation in that. And then, of course, Skate with a Cop at the ICE Arena, which was the second week of May. So it was good attendance there, and we touched on those in the next report. But with that, I will, I'm open to any questions the commission may have. And I'd like to add that, uh, on behalf of the Dick, uh, employees of Dickinson Police Department, we do appreciate the commission's commitment to supporting us in these, uh, mid-year salary increases as well.
Thank you, Chief Siani. Any questions for Chief? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move into community development. We have a presentation on the Museum Design Contract Amendment with GT Architecture. This will be presented by Senior Engineer Keller.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, uh, for your consideration, is a contract amendment with GT Architecture to provide design services, uh, construction bid documents, and procurement services for the museum expansion project. Uh, this contract will provide, uh, for a detailed design with construction documentation assistance during the bidding phase. Uh, this amendment will be for $527,000 on a lump sum basis. Uh, this work will be funded through the local sales tax and the North Dakota Department of Commerce Destination Development Grant Program. Uh, the city attorney has reviewed this contract amendment, and the, uh, city engineering staff recommends approval. One of the things that, uh, I want to tell you before, uh, before we go any further is, um, we are complete with the conceptual design. And, uh, here we have the community room in the dark red and the laboratory and, and collection repository in the red, along with, uh, various ADA compliance, uh, improvements in the, uh, in the existing structure. Uh, we do have a construction manager at risk onboard, and, um, uh, this, this is the next step in completing this project. With that, uh, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Commissioners, are there any questions on this contract amendment? I guess the only thing, we have, um, this is, if you read in the details here, it says these fees are based upon the amount listed. Will these fees go down if we get a favorable bid?
I'll have.
In the design.
Right, no, I.
Yeah, the, it says these fees are based upon a total constructible cost, right? So if this bid comes in at much lower, lower than what we have listed, do these fees adjust?
My understanding is this, this is the most we would, we would pay for these design fees.
These are the most?
Yes.
So they would be based upon the actual bid fee?
I, I don't know that for sure, sir. I can, I can circle back on that for you.
I'm just, again, like I said, if this is a fixed fee or we're basing upon the final bid, is my.
The language said not to exceed.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments, Commissioners? What are we looking at, uh, once we bid this? They looking at still breaking ground this year?
Certainly, we'd be looking at site work, Chris.
Uh, well, there, there is some site work that we have to do on the, um, north side of the building. So we would be looking at doing, uh, just earthwork. Uh, we would not anticipate, uh, actual building construction until the spring.
Okay.
Primarily on that site work, it's going to be, uh, rerouting the sanitary sewer out of, uh, the main part of Prairie Outpost Park. And also, there's some water lines that are going to be relocated. That is the sprinkler, sprinkler lines. We'll be relocating the small blacksmith exhibit, putting that up into the park. Otherwise, it would be in the middle of the footprint of the new building.
Okay, thank you.
And inside, the, uh, upgrades, the ADA-related upgrades that Chris referred to, that would be bringing, uh, our restrooms in the main building and also one in Yocum up to ADA standards. Technically, they could be grandfathered in, but really to provide service for our patrons, the best thing to do is to make them ADA compliant.
Are there any other questions, Commissioners?
Mr. President, just to, uh, piggyback on your question or your comment, um, that the contract is drafted, it is a lump sum fee not to exceed. And then you do have it identified as to what exactly is included in there, but it does say any change in scope of the project could incur additional fees. But, uh, the language, as it's indicated in there, is quite extensive as to what all includes in that development phase. So, but to confirm with Mr. Furman's comments, it does not say not to exceed.
Any other comments or questions, Commissioners? Now I look for a motion.
Mr. President, I've moved to approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Bear.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Dr. Bear.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up is the Multi-County Hazard Mitigation Plan Survey Announcement. This will be presented by City Planner Burchak.
Good evening, Commissioners, Natalie Burchak, City Planner. So today I'm presenting to you the, uh, Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan Survey. So this plan is being primarily helmed by Stark County, but it involves Billings, Dunn, Golden Valley, and Stark County. Uh, all four of them are updating their Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan together and have released a, uh, survey looking for some public feedback. Uh, so the Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan is designed to reduce the long-term risks to property and human life from future disasters. The project is an opportunity to increase awareness of hazards and risks in western North Dakota, build community partnerships, and identify cost-effective actions for risk reduction. The current Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan expires in November and must be updated for each county to maintain eligibility for FEMA mitigation grants. So right now, Stark County and the City of Dickinson, obviously Stark County is running this project, but the City of Dickinson is working closely with Stark County, as a lot of the, uh, projects we're looking to do in the future, we would like to be eligible for that, uh, FEMA grant money. And so we would like to kind of get those included on the project. But as for this, uh, announcement, I'm not looking for a motion from you guys. It's just kind of an alert to any citizens that if you've got kind of an extra 10 minutes to just take the survey to give feedback on anything relating to, uh, hazard mitigation, so whether it's areas in the city that are looking for better drainage, to, uh, any emergency response times or anything like that. But I'm. But I'm open to any questions that you guys might have about the project.
Thank you, Ms. Burchak. Are we placing this on the city website so they can scan the QR code? Are we sending anything out in billing?
Yes, so this QR code has been placed on the City of Dickinson's website, so it's available for anybody that has some extra time and would like to fill it out.
All right. Any other questions for Ms. Burchak? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move into the 2025 Lead Line Replacement Project Bid Award. This will be presented by Engineering Community Development Director Skolczek.
Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. For your consideration is the bid award for project number 2025-13, that's the 2025 Lead Service Line Replacement Project. Bid opening took place at City Hall on Wednesday, May 7, 2025, where two bids were received. The engineer's opinion of probable cost was $335,650.0. The total low bid was $310,240.0 of a difference of approximately negative 8%. This approval is contingent upon final review from, an approval from the North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality. Some key attributes for this project, 29 lead service lines, which are all anticipated to be from the curb stop to the water meter within the building. And this ultimately, this individual 29 lead service lines from the curb stop to the water meter, this should, this should conclude that remaining portion of our inventory that are specific to just those shorter segments. We still have a number on the, on the inventory that are anticipated to be from the water main all the way into the meter, but, but this portion only from the curb stop to the meter, though this should conclude that remaining amount. This project will be entirely funded through the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Loan, which was approved earlier in 2024, which includes a 75% loan forgiveness for the lead service line replacements. City engineering staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Skolczek. Any questions on the Lead Service Line Replacement Project Bid Award? I don't think we attach, there's no resolution or ordinance attached to this, so. There are no questions, I'd look for a motion.
Moved to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We have the North Industries Street and Storm Contract Amendment to Highlands Engineering. Mr. Skolczek.
Good evening again, Mr. President, Commissioners. For your consideration is a task order amendment for approval for construction engineering services for the street and stormwater reconstruction to Highlands Engineering and Surveying P L L C. Task order amendment is for time of materials estimate not to exceed amount of $71,626.0. Legal review has taken place for this, for this task order amendment, including in the scope of work are the following key tasks: a full-time resident project representative during the construction activities, which is anticipated to take approximately 20 working days, material testing, contract administration, field survey for the as-built documents and maps, and then final special assessment calculations and letters. This project was included in the 2025 Capital Improvement Project Budget, includes approximately 7,750 lineal feet of street improvements at an approximate width of about 26 feet, and this will be constructed during the 2025 construction season. Otherwise, engineering staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Skolczek. Any questions for Mr. Skolczek on the North Industries Street and Storm Contract Amendment? There are none, I'd look for a motion.
Moved to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Baer. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Next up, we have the DHS Water Main Extension Contract for Construction Engineering to Lowry Engineering. Mr. Skolczek.
Good evening again, Mr. President, Commissioners. For your consideration is a contract for approval for construction engineering services for the DHS Water Main Extension to Lowry Engineering, P L L C. The contract is for time of materials not to exceed amount of $20,000. Legal review of this contract has been completed, included in the scope of work are the following key tasks: resident project representative during construction activities, contract administration, field survey of the as-built documents and maps, and North Dakota Department of Water Resources cost share submittals. Key attributes for this project include looping of the water main from Fairway Street to Empire Road, the Department of Water Resources grant that has been approved for the project through the State Water Commission on April 10. That was a 60% grant at $236,691, and the construction engineering costs are eligible costs within that grant. And then it's, this project is directly associated with the development agreement with the Dickinson Public School District that was approved on March 18, 2025 with the city commission. So then, once we receive invoices for the project, both construction engineering services and the actual construction costs, then that development agreement said then all eligible costs will be submitted to the Department of Water Resources. Once we receive those dollars, any remaining costs will then be invoiced to the school district. City engineering staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Skolczek. Any questions on the Water Main Extension Contract? There are no questions, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I've moved to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Baer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none will vote. Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Next up, we have a Lead Service Line Replacement Task Order with Apex Engineering. Mr. Skolczek.
Good evening again, Mr. President, Commissioners. For your consideration is a task order with Apex Engineering Group Incorporated to perform engineering services for the construction, for the project 2025-13, that's the 2025 Lead Service Line Replacement Project on an hourly not to exceed amount as specified in the contract, which is $67,000. The city attorney has reviewed the contract and had no comments. Project was approved 2025 Capital Improvement Project Budget, and the engineering scope of work for this is also eligible to be paid using the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Loan, which includes a 75% loan forgiveness for the lead service line replacements, including the scope of work are the following key tasks: project management, preliminary design, final design, temporary construction easement acquisition, bidding assistance, as-built documents, and state revolving fund loan, and the North Dakota Department of Water Resources funding support. Key attributes for the project include 29 lead service lines to be replaced. These are all only from the curb stop to the water meter, and this would, as I said before, this would ultimately conclude our inventory that is specifically only from the curb stop to the water meter, based on our current inventory. City engineering staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Skolczek. Any questions on the Lead Service Line Replacement Task Order? If there are no questions, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Riddle.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Mr. Skolczek, we have the Sidewalk Program Bid.
Good evening again, Mr. President, Commissioners. For your consideration is a bid award for project number 2025-10, that's the 2025 Sidewalk Program Project. Bid opening took place at City Hall on Thursday, May 15, 2025, where three bids were received. The engineer's opinion of probable cost was $413,841.66. Total bid was $365,070.0, a difference of approximately minus 12%. This bid is based off of the anticipated or approximate quantities for each unit due to not actually having a set unit quantity for each individual line item, being that in, in most cases, ultimately, these are based on citizen requests for the concrete work on an unneeded, as-needed basis, and then associated with the voluntary special improvement district or special assessment. They have that option to either pay their special assessment upfront or the, or ultimately put it on as a special assessment to be paid over five years. Construction is planned to be completed during the 2025 construction season, and the, this was budgeted for the 2025 capital improvement projects. City engineering staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Skolczek. Any questions on the bid award? Now I look for a motion.
Just one question. Don't we budget like 200,000 for this program?
Yeah, in this case, we just put in a series of miscellaneous, miscellaneous quantities that would otherwise be anticipated, but yeah, there, there is a lesser amount budgeted, so we're just, so, and that, there was a, no guarantee to the amount of work associated.
Got you. Okay, thank you. With that, I'd make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the Sidewalk Program Bid by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
The second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Mr. Skolczek, you have a monthly report.
Good evening again, Mr. President, Commissioners. So the monthly report for engineering and community development. Starting off with planning, so far, year-to-date, 20 pre-application meetings have taken place. Three new applications for the future or up-and-coming Planning and Zoning Commission meetings have been received, and then we've already received three applications for the Dickinson Revitalization Program that have been submitted and then sent over to Gate City Bank, so it's good to see that that program's being utilized. Two zoning text amendments have been drafted and addressing the corridor overlay district, which you approved earlier, as well as we're looking at some text amendments for data centers and crypto mining that was presented at the last Planning and Zoning Commission meeting with interest to look at additional information. And then we continue to make progress and work towards finalizing the comprehensive plan and transportation master plan update, certainly before the end of this year. Building encodes the total number of permits that have been paid and picked up. This date is through May 15, 2025. As you can see, continue to see good progress on the total number of permits that have been picked up. We do split out residential and commercial permits separately. We also split out City of Dickinson-specific permits versus what's in Stark County, so see the bar graphs there. Moving on to engineering, so a number of projects that are currently planned for execution throughout 2025 construction season. Right now, most of the projects are currently scheduled to be completed. October 17 is the substantial completion dates, and then ultimately, then just, we do have the library expansion that we're working on getting out to bid. The plans moved to complete and moving with the construction manager at-risk process to get that out to bid. For those that recall, part of the project plans for the 2024 road maintenance project included the mill and overlay of 21st Street West from Highway 22 to Prairie Avenue, and that, they started work. We originally had forecasted limited amounts of rain, and then they were decreasing the percentages of potential rain. Then we started getting the rain, and that was not at all what was forecasted, so we've had a big delay, so apologize to all the citizens. We wouldn't have started if we hadn't had a better forecast. I can't necessarily control that, but, so we do plan on getting back to work as soon as possible, once the rain events conclude and getting that segment that is currently milled on the north side of the roadway, pave that in. So preliminary and design engineering projects, we've got a series of different projects under percentage completes, as you can see, and continuing to work ahead on a pretty sizable project list. This is page one of two of the individual project lists that we're working ahead on. Jump ahead to the second sheet. And then, last but not least, so geographical information system, so Mr. Darrell Holcald has been working on editing some attribute data and some features for parcels, utilities, zoning, et cetera, and, and then also working with the engineering techs. So we're, we're trying to get our system to where as utility permits are concluded and new utility installations are occurring, getting that updated into GIS as reasonable as possible in time so that that data is live for, for other departments to utilize. And then also working with Eagleview for some efficiencies for our system and for citizen use as well. And then, as we're looking at some data management and database type updates, that'll be part of our GIS software requirements, so kind of reorganizing some of the database and whatnot, and, and that may seem maybe less than exciting, but ultimately, it's things that have to occur behind the scenes so that all the functionality works, and, and as you click on certain line segments or, or whatever it may, may be, you can still pull the data out of the system and have that readily available to both the public and to city staff. With that, stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Skolczek. Any questions on the monthly report from Engineering and Community Development?
Mr. President.
Commissioner Baer.
Mr. Skolczek, I see here, and I'm just asking for an update here, the entrance signs, I see they're about 99% completed. Are the progresses moving forward on that? Do you have any updates on when they plan to start the two roundabouts?
Yeah, so the, specifically the roundabout at Old Highway 10 and the West Business Loop, and then at 8th Street Southwest and Highway 22, those are scheduled for the 2026 construction season. Those are associated with the West Business Loop reconstruction. We requested, and Senior Engineer Keller has been working with the Department of Transportation on making the request in for having those two entrance signs being within the middle of the individual roundabouts at those two intersections. The DOT has not come back with any kind of conclusions, but we do know they are working on looking at that. It would be, I believe their terminology was it's a policy update. Right now, there is no policy, and so they want to put a policy in place. Doesn't necessarily mean that they're guaranteeing us that we'll be able to put the entrance signs in the roundabouts, but we're trying, so. The north and east entrance signs, those are something we are looking at getting out to bid here very soon, in hopes to get those done yet this construction season, if at all possible.
Okay. Do you, do you have any idea when they, when the state plans to start, like especially the southbound roundabout? I mean, would that be completed by the 4th of July weekend, or is that going to take? I'm assuming that's going to take all summer long.
Yeah, the, the work for the two roundabouts in the West Business Loop that are bundled into one overall package of plans, and then ultimately then one construction package, that will take the entirety of the construction season. I believe it's slated to be bid late this fall, if I recall. If not this fall, it would If not this fall, it would be in January during the, the bid process through the Department of Transportation. Any kind of like specific sequencing or anything like that, we don't necessarily have, we don't have, because it's not out to bid yet, we don't have that detailed of information yet, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Skolczek. We'll move into public comments. The first individual on the sign-up sheet this evening is Dave Bedoin, and his topic is potholes.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, or probably good evening to everybody here. It's my privilege to be before this city, expressing concerns that I have in our procedures and our functions. One of the main concerns that I do have is for our streets, has always been a high level of concern and uneasiness for residents of Dickinson. It is also one of the main expenses of the city of Dickinson, and has, and has been the repairs and placement of concrete and asphalt. So concrete and asphalt's been one of the bigger expenses for the city of Dickinson. So my concern has always been the usage of concrete and the placement of concrete, and how do you make concrete last when you go through weather changes? So the, the changing weather, the extremes of weather from well below zero to well above freezing, to me is a great concern as, as we enter into this grand solar minimum. Now, I explained this before, four or five months. Grand solar minimum means grand, it means huge, solar from the sun. Minimum means the minimum of sunspots, so in a time of progress, in time of globalization, you have a grand source, grand solar maximum, maximum sunspots. Economy is flourishing, businesses is flourishing, people are happy, and they're producing. Now, when you get into grand solar minimum, the weather changes, and you have severe changing, and my concern has been for our, the money that we spend on concrete and asphalt. So history tells us during 1804, on December 16th, Lewis and Clark expedition, reported a low of 43 below, on, I think it was a Tuesday, and, and at 4:00 PM that, that evening, they had a record high of 28. The next day was 38. So you're having a degrees about 80 degrees difference. I think we've experienced that through the last two years, changes in, in the degrees of, of weather, and what that has, it has for the, as far as the asphalt and concrete is concerned, the expansion, the contraction of the, of the concrete creates holes, creates cracks in the holes, so. See now, so resulting in ruts, surface stripping, and potholes. My concern from the start has been us to use hydrated lime in our concrete and asphalt. This method has endured through the ages such as the Roman Colosseum and the Pantheons. Part of them. By hot mixing, let's see, by hot mixing hydrated lime into asphalt, and by using 1% hydrated lime in concrete enhances the durability, reducing moisture damage, and improves resistance to freezing and thawing. In our concrete, it can be increased, it increases density and water resisting, while in asphalt, it helps with rutting, cracking, aging, which results in potholes. Now, this may not seem too important to you, but there is a 25, when you use hydrated, when you use hydrated lime in concrete, you get a 25% longevity rate. And now our streets, I think we, we, we use a resistant tar on our streets in like in September, then we put gravel on it to extend the life for another five or seven years on that pavement, that asphalt pavement. See, our concrete, also, I, I have to make a, a note about Roman concrete. It's something that has lasted a long time. Like I said, it's been used in the Colosseums, the Pantheons, but it's also, if you head towards Bismarck, you'll see the highway there. In that highway, you'll see these pillars that have been brought down into the water that stabilized that road above, and that's made out of Roman concrete, it's made out of lime. So as I understand, we pack sand in areas where, and then level that off, and then we place our, our sealant on top of it. I have another, did you guys understand what I'm saying? I see some doubt here.
Yes, Mr. Bedoin, and, and you're at your five minutes. So you would like us to look at alternative methods?
Okay. I'll just make a, I got two more comments. The president's, the present speed limit is 75 miles an hour. At 75 miles an hour, a passing sound creates 90 decibels of measurable noise. The acceptable level of decimals noises is about 40 decibels. At 65 percent, 65 miles per hour, the decimal goes down as the speed goes down. At higher rates, the safety performance on these highways increases. Higher speeds and the impact of these higher speeds are more likely to cause severe injuries or death. Those who have lived in these cities have more of a readiness to traffic adjustments compared to neighbors like our friends, our farmers, and ranching community. Those who wish to see a lower speed limit should contact the North Dakota Council, Safety Council in Bismarck at 701-223-6372. That's 701-223-6372.
Thank you, Mr. Bedoin.
Is that it?
That's it.
Well, I still have other concerns. I hope we can have, get, get past this stage that we're in. I hope we, instead of having these restrictions put on us, we talk about accountability, then we'll see justice. We understand, you know, this transaction between American Bank and the city of Dickinson, that was never a, a complete audit. Hope you understand that. And our citizens don't know that, so accountability enhances our own freedoms. Thank you for your time.
We have another individual that has signed up, but I do not see present. I don't think they're online. And then, we have Mr. Ryan Masano, with, his topic is First Amendment.
Yeah, good evening. It's a privilege to return. The purpose of the First Amendment and the Bill of Rights was to ensure that the government did not take powers that were the people's. It is for the people to decide what is said at meetings by the public. It is not for elected officials or public employees to decide what citizens can and cannot say. I would urge a complete repeal of all the speech memos. The latest one was a cleverly designed ploy to stop me from speaking. As it said, only business owners from Dickinson could speak, not employees, which is gross discrimination. So only business owners can speak in public, but not their employees? That's appalling. I understand Ms. Winko makes 17,000 a month, someone please correct me if I'm wrong. You'd think for 17,000 a month, an attorney would have a good working knowledge of the fundamental first right of all citizens in America, the First Amendment, but Ms. Winko has consistently demonstrated she does not. It doesn't matter what other cities are doing. Those who don't allow public comment are violating the First Amendment. Thank you for all the Commissioners who supported the First Amendment by not passing the further speech restrictions proposed, proposed tonight. All these restrictions on speech remind me of an observation I have no personal experience with, but I have heard commonly from others, that when the lights go on, the roaches go running. We citizens shouldn't have to come up here to remind the Commissioners of what the Constitution says, you should know that already. And a special thank you to Commissioners Riddle and Baer for constantly supporting free speech even when it's unpopular to do so. That takes courage, and without courage, no other virtue is possible. Only one citizen who came up here in the last six months who knew the First Amendment and its five rights, and she and I were the only two, besides Jeff, who did not approve of your restrictions on speech. Your focus on keeping speech focused on business within your jurisdiction leaves out the possibility of national and international crime cartels operating in this city. How are we supposed to address that when you don't have jurisdiction over national and international crime cartels? But if we citizens see this, we need to be able to express that. So we're going to be able to be shut down because you can't do anything about these people running loose? We need to be able to say it so the people can respond. That's what I'm trying to do. So the Dickinson Press, wittingly or unwittingly, likely wittingly, constantly puts out disinformation, sports and national news items, but never gets to the root of the problem, but they savagely attack me for telling the truth. I just went to a ranch branding on Saturday where they were branding calves. It was a wonderful experience, and when I saw them separating the calves from the cows, I was reminded of what's happening with us humans. They have a way of kind of shepherding the cows down the road they're going to go, and just like us humans, when we're exposed to information, we're shepherded down the path that we're supposed to go. And when one rebellious one gets out of line, he's got tremendous pressures put on him to get back in line, get into that corral with the others. Newspapers, television, Facebook, and social media, radios, schools, libraries, nonprofits, all coordinate to guide the minds of the people of Dickinson. Like the female cows, we are carefully herded into correct thinking. The Dickinson Press is a huge problem. I trust them just as much as I trust hugging a grizzly bear. They are not here to tell people the truth, they're here to keep people distracted and ignorant, to keep us complacent slaves. If you drink water from a poisoned source, you're, that's going to be a problem. Well, if you get information from a poisoned source, that's an even worse problem, because at least if you drink water from a poisoned source, you'll speedily figure out something is wrong. But if you're getting information from a poisonous source, you may never figure out for the next 100 years that there's something wrong, and you may not figure it out until it's too late. And that's what's happening with the Dickinson Press back there. This, so the Dickinson Press, actually, this is my final point, they actually cited the ADL. The ADL is not from our city. The ADL Anti-Defamation League was started in 1913 to protect a man who was credibly accused of raping and murdering a 13-year-old girl. The Dickinson Press, which is in this room with us right now, that is their authority. They look up to an organization which defended a man who raped and murdered a 13-year-old girl, but they don't like me. I am happy the ADL hates me. I don't like organizations which protect child molesters and child murderers, and I would hope nobody else in this room likes organizations that defend child murderers and child rapists as well. But the Dickinson Press takes that organization seriously. So it's a, newspaper's a total disgrace. The newspaper calls me a hateful man, but I would say it's hateful to defend a man who raped and murdered a 13-year-old girl. That's the last of my remarks.
We'll move on to Commissioner comments. Commissioners, do you have any comments? Nothing, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned.